President, shall I continue running through the agenda, sir?
Yes, except we've got Mr. Price.
I'd like to recuse myself from item 59 because my wife's employer has worked on this project in the past.
All right, recusal for item number 59 for Councilmember Price. Mr. Lee.
Thank you. Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. In the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, thank you, Najeeb, for leading us. And thank you, Councilman De Leon, for honoring this great city, as well as not only Islam, but all the great faiths of Los Angeles. And we think that what's really important here, as you see the tapestry of our community, this is a microcosm of the tapestry of America. And that is why we believe that America is the best home for Islam. That we are here as stakeholders, as shareholders, in this experiment, as we work for justice in terms of housing, in terms of treatment by our authorities, in terms of having a place at the seat of the table in all of your offices. So I hope that we can have representatives from your districts, from the Muslim community, meet with all of you. As we look for peace and justice in Palestine, Israel, Gaza is on our minds in terms of what's happening there. The devastation, the destruction, the continuing war that we want to end. And therefore, we can only end that war when we have peaceful, coexisting discussions here in Los Angeles. And we look forward to doing that with you as soon as we can. So, thank you very much, and we thank our honorees who represent the best of our community and the best of Los Angeles. And we thank you for making America a home for Islam.
All right, with that, we just thank you very much for the time that you've given us. Assalamualaikum. Have a wonderful day. Thank you so much.
Good morning. I'm Mr. City Attorney. I would like to speak on all items and the general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Sure. The first item I would like to talk about is number 50. It's about Juneteenth, the item. But I would like to know why we do not have any Juneteenth services on Figueroa. Because I know every time I drive by the street of Figueroa, I see hundreds or maybe thousands of Juneteenth on the side of the street, walking. But why our mayor, why our city council, why our Blooming Field does not visit Figueroa to provide any Juneteenth services right there? Why people are standing on the street, soliciting different sort of services? And then doing LAPD, council, the mayor, doing nothing about Juneteenth in Figueroa? So why we are only talking about a Juneteenth in specific area, but not every single area of the city? Now, let's switch to the next item, number 51. It's about LAPD Valley Traffic Division. So I do support 100% about additional police services to LAPD Valley Traffic Division. But I have the same concern, same complaint, that we need more police in every single district, every corner of the LAPD. We don't want to only increase the patrol in this Valley Traffic Division. We have 21 divisions. We have four traffic divisions. We have 25 divisions total. But this is not the only area need more services. Because when I call LAPD, 10 minutes, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, nobody show up. So this issue is in Valley District, but in every single else, district of LAPD, maybe, for example, Skid Row or whatever, Figueroa, everybody called Figueroa 911, nobody care. And now, let's talking about 54. 54, about LAPD regarding the catalytic converter etching machine. I support this because during the 2020, 2020, beginning of the COVID, they are, they are daily, on a daily basis, people's vehicle are getting looted, are getting rioted. Their mechanical parts of the vehicle are getting stolen, the tire, the catalytic converter, the windshield, the steering wheel, the handbrake, whatever, the driver's seats or whatever, you name it, continue to getting stolen. But when I reach out to my council member Hernandez, no response. When I'm reaching out to LAPD, when I'm reaching out to City Attorney, when I'm reaching out to the mayor's office, no response. So we need to do anything to stop the vehicle theft. And then for my general public comment, I would like to shout out to one of the finest LAPD officer, which is LAPD Officer Bonfield. So one day, I was very depressed. I was sitting next to the female bathroom. Because, Mr. City Attorney, I have no hope being a man anymore, because I'm hopeless with my three inches. But Officer Bonfield gave me a hug next to the female bathroom. And then she hugged me, and she told me, there's still hope in life. And then LAPD will protect everyone. Not doesn't matter you have 24 inches, or you have a three inches shrimp like I do. Officer Bonfield continued to support. My safety is her priority, and everyone else, doesn't matter one inches, two inches, three inches, there's still hope in life. So I decided to continue to live my life with confidence. I do not have to be a man. I have, I can be a woman, and then just like Officer Bonfield. If Officer Bonfield can succeed as a female, I can succeed the same way as Officer Bonfield.
All right, keep hope alive. Let's go to the next one. And just as a reminder to everyone who is here, during general public comment, you need to speak to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of this body. So, good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
I would like to speak on the items I submitted in the kiosk that are now on your screen, Bob. That's all items and general comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right, so 50 is lighting up City Hall from, the lighting up that happened a month and a half ago for Juneteenth. You're just paying for it now. So it's worth noting that people who get sent arrested and get sent to jail, but that get prison time, they're forced to work. So that's kind of, it's forced labor, so that should be noted. We have 51 from City Staffer B for taking money away from the Sunshine Canyon Communities, Community Amities Trust Fund. That's the one that's supposed to mitigate the impacts of a community that's living near a landfill. He's taking money away from that just to give it to the LAPD. Or just, that's, did you actually do anything other than give money to the LAPD, John? I mean, like, that seems to be all you do, and you're taking money away from something that's supposed to help the community. We have acceptance of donations for a camp that looks like you already accepted a donation since the camp started yesterday. That's 52. We have 54. That's a motion from Kevin De Leon, the known racist, for Cadillac converter etching machines. A donation, fuck that. Fuck anything Kevin introduces. 55, that's like, you know, sidewalk maintenance. Would you guess it's not bad, but it's Kevin De Leon? So who knows what's going on with that one? We have item, let's see, 60. The one where you're rushing through discipline reform for the LAPD at the last second to try to kill it. By arguing with the mayor, and then just kill it because that's what you're trying to do. Now, let's go back to item 53. That is the list of citywide special events. Let's take a look at some of these highlights from this list, because it's really interesting. Now, the average subtotal for each council district spent is 158,591. The average rounded subtotal for Kevin De Leon is $622,000. And most of these are campaign events. Maybe you should charge his campaign for some of these events, because this is a ridiculous amount of money for campaign events for Kevin De Leon. $5,000 for Krikorian's LAPD North Hollywood Division Car Show. Oh, and $10,000 from Jarzloski for the Israeli consulate. Fuck that. Schedule the
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All items, please, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Great. So a lot of the items are business improvement districts. So let me talk about those for a second, or I'll sing about them. We're in the business of improvement districts. What are those about? We give away incentives, but then what do we get out of the deal we make with these entities? Do they pay good wages? Who do they aim to please? Or are they charging high for esoteric things and not even paying a wage that's living? Shouldn't these deals require at least a livable wage for every one of their hires? Whoa, what is the point of this? Are we getting what we want right now? Whoa, when we're improving these districts, are we including the workers now? Because it seems like this deal's no good. Are you gonna show the people how? It makes it better like you said it would? Because God, it just seems no, it just seems no good. Okay, on to item one, for multifamily housing bonds. 137 units on West Third. I'm wondering how many bedrooms these units are going to be. We have a lot of apartments, but not many that are really big enough for families. So when we say multifamily, I hope it's not studios and one bedrooms. I hope it's two and three and four bedrooms, the size of homes that growing families need. Council members like the ones from CD4 and Ithiel Rahman love to tout these big developments. But that councilwoman lives in a beautiful home in a single-family area. And so I wonder if the people passing these things are going to be living in the types of housing that is being built? And how they're being assigned, is it going to be a lottery? And how affordable are they going to be? These all needs to, need to be things we should be considering. 55, racist Kevin De Leon is going to deal with some sidewalk issues in his district. That's great. One time, a rep from CD4 told me it would take 500 years to fix all the sidewalks in LA. Funny, because the country's not that old, but they didn't have any questions about that study or those numbers. They just said, sorry, Stace, if you have an issue with your sidewalk, it'll be 500 years. I hope your great, 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 great grandchildren can enjoy those. So 60, the mayor wants to veto a ballot measure to hone in on police disciplinary action. The very progressive, Big D Democrat mayor doesn't want the LAPD to be accountable, and she doesn't want the voters to have any say in these institutions that we pay for. So this body is going to have a limited amount of time to decide whether you want to challenge that veto. So I think it is incumbent upon you to tell the mayor that the people should be making these decisions, not her. We're gonna come out tomorrow to protest the vote you have tomorrow for police funds. Not really police, Maganam, former soldiers from the IDF with big guns. You'd rather protect illegal sale events than acknowledge the crimes Israel commits? So the people come out tomorrow, and I hope they shut it down tomorrow. Fuck your vote. Fuck Israel, Maganam. Fuck Zionism. Fuck the apartheid state. Fuck Israel, Maganam. Fuck Zionism. Fuck the apartheid state. It would be really respectful if Unicef and Heather and the people chatting would pay attention. I know y'all don't like me, but at least pay the rest of the republic more respect than you give me up here. And by the way, fuck you, KDL.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the Annie slash Paramore mix-up. I like the mixing up the genres.
Okay. So my name is Brenda Contreras, and I'm here today on behalf of the communities in CD1, CD13, CD14, and surrounding hillside communities who are alarmed by the ecocide happening to the native plants here in Tobangad. Year after year, we see the legal removals and intentional mutilation of protected trees and shrubs, including coastlive oak, Mexican elderberry, toyon, and the rare and endemic Takape Wachut, or Southern California black walnut tree. This is violence, and y'all are allowing this violence to go on without any consequences or changes in policy. It has been left up to community to call out these violent transgressions, fight for protected trees, demand accountability. And when we reach out to the city of LA to enforce the tree and shrub protection ordinance, we're met with the same gaslighting response by urban forestry, that no protected trees were removed. And this is insanity. In the past month and a half alone, we have seen illegal removals. This is ecocide, you guys. In the past month alone, we've seen illegal removals of native woodlands in Elysian Park, at a children's forest school, in Deb's Park. A contractor, by contractors hired by Reckon Parks. A beautiful 60-plus-year-old black walnut tree
Speaker, I can't tell which item you're speaking to.
It's general public comment and item three.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Brush clearance. 60-year-old black walnut tree was removed by a developer on city property. So these removals of black walnuts on the Southwest Museum, and now there's a proposal of 136 removals at San Pascal Park. This is alarming. Where are your priorities? Funding LAPD and IDF soldiers, they're not going to keep us safe. Trees, biodiversity, they keep us safe. They keep our communities healthy. We are not separate from nature. We've gone to Reckon Parks, we've gone to urban forestry, we've gone to the Board of Public Works, and no one wants to be held accountable. We're here today, city council members, we are asking for accountability. We're asking for reform on the LA Tree Protected Tree and Shrub Ordinance, and to apply to city agencies, including Reckon Parks, to apply to public lands, and move the city's land stewardship to model, to an in-house model.
Less than a week ago, the park fire in Butte County was started in an ecologically disturbed area dominated by dried-up star thistle. Since then, the fire has burned nearly 400,000 acres and counting, helping to set new records in number of acres burned by wildfires this early in the year in California. A bleak omen for this year's fire season. I'm very curious how much money is being spent on brush clearance in LA when not only are many acres of dry flash fuels, like black mustard and thistle, going uncut, when untrained contractors are going after mature, evergreen, native shrubs and trees that have natural fire resilience and shade out invasives in areas where they're actually allowed to flourish, in a children's arboretum, no less. This is happening in Deb's Flat Top and most notably, Elysian Park, among many other parks and green spaces in LA. Any fiery colleges could tell you that this is money very poorly spent. If we were serious about this, we'd be putting this money into not just removing invasives, but planting fire-resistant species like those that were so curiously cut down under Reckon Park's watch. The black walnut, toyon, lemonade berry, among others. The hills and parks of LA have incredible potential as communal green spaces, but they are largely left to their own devices in an ecologically damaged state, if not actively harmed by Reckon Park's negligence. We should be taking some of the money going towards annual brush clearance and frequent brush fires, putting up frequent firefighting and putting it towards planting the types of plants that have evolved to be in this climate and ecosystem. As wildfires becomes an increasing threat, this is a serious safety matter that is going to continue costing LA more and more money over time as the canopy is reduced and more invasives take over. I very much hope you will take these things into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
My name is Lucy Johnston, and I'm a student of Biology and Environmental Policy at Occidental College. I'm here to speak on behalf of the recent deforestation at Elysian Park. The first thing that I learned as a biology student is that native plants in their native landscape are always the best at protecting against wildfires, against drought, against erosion, and against other environmental risks that face our communities. The reckless deforestation of this park should be held accountable to those who destructed it. I'm asking you today to listen to the people of Coyote Maseweli, who are asking you that there need to be better protections for this park. The arborists and the contractors who have deforested this park must be held accountable for their destruction of native species such as the black walnut tree, which are protected, making this an illegal deforestation.
Speaker, you have, you still have your one minute for general public comment, but just as a quick ask or request. So we have interpreters who wear headphones. I promise you, we can hear you loud and clear. So if you could just, for everybody, just moderate your voice so that it's not blasting into our interpreter's ears, we would appreciate it. You still have a minute for general public comment if you'd like.
I'm going to use my moment for general comment to quote something that Coyote Maseweli wrote. "In response to the ongoing ecocide of native trees in Los Angeles and the recent removal of the mature, protected native woodland in Elysian Park, we are demanding that city council actively enforce protection of the native species in LA through reform to the brush clearance protocols and the protected tree and shrub ordinance." Thank you.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
All available items and public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
Okay, so the owners of property 711 West Greenlee, 1620 West 59th, 4454 South Crocker, 2105 East 114th, 8855 North Tampa, 114 North Deborah, 16608 West Park Lane, 537 South Grand Vista, 3762 South Normandy. If any of these owners are here today, know that they have a $3 million lien on their property so they can take back, make money for the city. Make sure that you reverse the lien and sue their asses. So Charles Kabala, I'm gonna need you to find another job, my friend, other than a race bait for these properties. 50, relative to funding services for recognitions of Juneteenth, really? Recognition of lighting, while you have people like Alexander Mitchell, who was pulled out of his car, punched in the face while he was handcuffed. Tim Misskosker, instead of having a conversation, Tim McCosker. Can you recognize Alan Zander Mitchell, who was punched in the face, arrested, right, in Watts, South LA? This is standard operating procedure. So before you adjourn today, make sure you honor this family, since we didn't have a statement from you or Karen Bass. 51, the amenities of trust fund for $50,000 for LAPD. I already told you how I feel about that. You barely have a black woman on the police commission. When you have black families that have no protections over them, this is an issue. So we would like to have a five-letter signature at minimum from each of the city council members with the highest rate of violence towards African-Americans. So we have Price, you have District 8, District 15 as well. Most of them are having conversations, as you see, ladies and gentlemen. They're having conversations while we're discussing important matters, if they're not eating or walking around. Okay, Rachel, put on a jacket. Please dress as if we're in business clothes, not a nightclub in LA City.
Speaker, I need you to stick to the agenda, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
Just saying. Yes. So wrapping up on Juneteenth, I did want to say something else. Is this public comment now, or is it still my agenda item 50?
So you're still on agenda item 50?
Okay, so Juneteenth. So we're going to need some bills passed, just like they stopped Asian hate in 30 days for you. We want to actually have some protections for black families who actually built and create this country. So House Resolution 194, that was passed by Stephen Cohen. We have not since had a price tag behind that. You hear about reparations, but it's a continued study. We don't want any more studies while you beating us and killing us and shooting us in the face like Sonia Massey. Because if she wasn't black, she would still be alive today. Just saying. So Kevin De Leon, 50% of the people that are homeless in Skid Row are African-Americans. So at least pass the bill if your corrupted ass is still on that seat. All right, so resolution. Acknowledgement for slavery incompatible with basic founding principles, recognized by the Declaration of Independence. Price tag, $1 million. Apologies to African-Americans on behalf of the people of the United States for the wrongs that were committed against their ancestors that suffered under slavery in Jim Crow. $1 million. The persons described in House Resolution 194 deserve at least $5 million and 60 acres of land, 24 on top of the 40s, you still didn't give us for good measure. This is what I'd like to see for the 25 presidential candidate. I don't care if it's Kamala Harris or dumb Trump. Between those two, we need to see the funding for our apology that was already given on a federal level. We're not interested in what LA City, or the county, or the state of California, what Gavin Newsom is doing. We need to see you cut the check. Black power and reparations to all.
So, general comment. I too am going to talk about parks and recreation, so if you're listening, people, I'm gonna hear a couple of parks in your districts. I already spoke with Ms. Hernandez today about Yale, about Yale and Ored Park. It has the stairs in Chinatown. Parks do not take care of the stairs. The stairs need to be addressed. We have a lot of people, family and elderly people, use those stairs to communicate from the lower corridor to the higher corridor. And we have people graffitiing. It's trash, and parks won't pick it up. The parks that's sitting on Yale and Ored, also, somebody from his council needs to go down and talk to Homeboy Industries. They do lunch there every day. I spoke with the guys, two guys to take care of that park. After they come down for lunch, the bathrooms are completely graffitied up, and their times need to be limited on the park at night. Also, Elysian Park, same argument about the trees. However, I went to Elysian Parks because it's hot. They're natural cooling places. There's two bathrooms open. We need to get the bathrooms fixed. We need the bathrooms open.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker? Your time has expired. Next speaker?
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Ben Viskaravorten. I am a Chicano Jew here representing Jewish Voice for Peace LA and standing in solidarity with my siblings of Coyote Walnmasewali. I'm here to say that I'm thoroughly disappointed in this city's leadership. What me and my friends saw take place in Elysian Park was an offense to our humanity as Angelinos and as Jews. We as Jews are raised recognizing how intertwined our lives are with nature, and I have the utmost respect for those land stewards who have managed and cared for this land over the years, only to see them chopped and uprooted like the olive trees of Palestine. I was raised to always stand on the side of those who struggle against oppression, and that's why I, after 10 months of protesting for the Palestinian people, am standing before you today. Tomorrow, I'm urging you to vote no on a massive waste of taxpayer money in the form of a proposal to fund private security for religious institutions after the events in Pico Robertson. This proposal does not make our city nor my community more safe. And I can tell you that firsthand, when I was attacked with bear spray by a teenage boy at the Pico Robertson synagogue, Maganam was nowhere to be found.
Okay, can you go to general public comment?
What was that?
A general public comment?
Yes, thank you. Maganam was nowhere to be found. This proposal is not here to protect Jewish people, and the funds should be appropriated towards the demands of Coyote Walnmasewali, which include enforcement and reform of the LA Protected Tree and Shrub Ordinance and the establishment of an in-house model of land stewardship. Thank you.
Good morning. So again, even if you're at the podium, I want to ask that everybody please adhere to the size restrictions on our signs. So, good morning. If you could please remind us of the name that you signed up under and the items that you'd like to speak to?
Yes, my name is Drew. I'm gonna speak for general public comment and item three.
Okay, go ahead. You have one minute for item three and one minute for general public comment.
My name is Drew, and I live and work in El Sareno Tongvaland. One of the most infuriating aspects of the ecocide that took place at the children's arboretum in Elysian Park was the gaslighting from city officials that attempted to deny that protected shrubs and trees were destroyed in the name of brush clearance. This culture of denial is what is at play on the national and international levels regarding the ongoing genocide in Gaza and the whole of Palestine, and is in part what propels us into the council chambers today. Make no mistake, the issues of brush clearance in LA and genocide in Gaza, at times referred to by the IDF as mowing the lawn, are connected. As a native plant landscape professional, it warmed my heart to engage with and educate my peers while cleaning up the mess left by Park and Rec's contracted brush clearance operation. The knowledge required to steward this land is and always has been present. If the city cannot steward the land, give the land back to those who can.
General public comment? General public comment?
Council member Soto Martinez, we look forward to your response to our concerns in Elysian Park. Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning. My name is Micah Hesurjian. I live in northeast Los Angeles. The brush clearance policies that this city follows are extremely outdated and irrelevant for the actual landscape of Los Angeles. Prime example is what happened at Elysian Park, where clearing of all these fire-resilient native species to allow room for fire-prone invasive species to grow just increases the fuel that is going to be a fire risk to the city. So we need brush clearance reform to include protections for our native tree species. Needs to be on the mailers that go out to both private residences, and it also needs to be more inclusive in training of in-house contractor, not contractors, but in-house staff who understand the landscape of Los Angeles. And for my general public comment, I would like to just urge you all to please reform the Protected Tree and Shrub Ordinance. It's not being enforced right now. Urban forestry continually gaslights the community when we tell them and provide them clear evidence that native protected tree species are being removed. One of the oldest black walnuts on protected public property was just removed by a developer. These hundreds of trees in Elysian Park, Deb's Park, it's continuing to happen. It needs to apply to public property. It needs to have a clear enforcement and accountability process, and we are expecting full accountability from the council members, Rec and Parks, urban forestry, for this ecocide that is continually happening in our city. Protecting our native tree species should be of utmost importance when, instead of planting new trees, we need to protect our urban canopy that already exists. Thank you.
I am a concerned constituent of CD 13, and I'm speaking to the ecocide and deforestation that took place next to the Gracie Simmons Lodge in Elysian Park. This was a children's arboretum and a mature native plant forest that was there that was completely razored due to an alleged brush clearance. And when Koyoto Masewali shared what had happened, and I went out and saw the space, it was completely unrecognizable. I used to see kids as part of the forest school in there every day, and it was completely lush, safe enclosure, and that school without any warning has no place to go. The space was a designated educational area, and there was an agreement with all of those over 400 families and children that was completely violated. Also, razor in these areas and removing all the native plants not only left all of the fledgling plants with no shade and exposure during the heat right now, but it leaves open territory for invasive plants to come in. My cousin died last year fighting a forest fighter above...
So, Speaker, you've used your one minute for item number 3, so if you'd like, you can move on to the other items you mentioned. Those are bid items, though. Or you can continue this topic during general.
Okay, I'll continue.
One minute for general public comment.
One minute for general public comment?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The reality of forest fires and the loss of native plants to sustain ourselves is not lost on me. You can't just put whatever ecosystem you want. So even if you're not part of CD 13, I encourage you to uphold the native plant preservations in your area. I've lost family members due to forest fires. I've had multiple, the town I was born in burned down. These are all violations of agreements. It's essentially like continued genocide and treaty violations to not protect these native plants. This is our land. We live here, and you not paying attention to the erasure and removal of native species here that will sustain our lives and support our children is a huge violation and disrespect, and it needs to be prioritized. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon. If you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Hi, my name is Juan Carlos Bocanegra. I'm here for the Cecil Hotel on 640 South Main Street. There's a couple of things that are wrong at the Cecil, and I know the Cecil right now is in...
You have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay. This is my first time here, and I'm nervous, and the elevator didn't work for almost two months. Right now it's working, but it only works going up, not going down. They have to use the key for the... I'm on the 15th floor. I have a cane, I have a back problem. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't work. I believe Haclaw hasn't paid. I believe Haclaw hasn't paid Cecil Hotel. I know he's in bankruptcy. This person leases to this person, this person to this person, this person to this person. So I don't know what to do now, to either sue this person, sue this person regarding the deposit and regarding... It's just a whole mess out there, and I hope somebody can do something about the Cecil. Haclaw hasn't paid, that's where her Haclaw hasn't paid the Cecil for like six, seven, eight months. I wonder what's gonna happen to that money, if it's gonna go back to the city, or if it's gonna go back to Haclaw, or if it's gonna go, who has that money? Who has that money? Who's that money gonna go to? Not only for me, but for a lot of people.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker? Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker?
Leslie Morales, leasing director for the Cecil Hotel.
Good afternoon. So you have one minute for general public comment.
Sure. We're here because we need assistance. We need assistance. We're housing the unhoused, and in many cases, the unwanted. And we need assistance of mental health and different services for our community of the Cecil Hotel. We've repaired our elevator numerous times, and tenants break them when they're having a mental health episode, as well as their units. They have difficult times living indoors without becoming an indoor encampment. So we need assistance from the City Council to help us provide mental health component in the hotel, as well as other services that are needed for all of our residents. Thank you.
I serve the Cecil Hotel as chaplain and advocate, both for staff and residents. You're hearing from a lot of residents today that are telling their stories about the Cecil. Here's the big problem. Many of our residents, many of the problems are rooted in unchecked, untreated mental illness and drug addiction. Mental breakdowns, all of these are treatable, but they're all at the root of the problem. Unmitigated rage, mental health breakdowns, the people that are experiencing these are causing drastic, drastic damage to the building. And with the limited resources the Cecil Hotel has right now, there is no way that management can keep up with it. Leslie and Paula are fierce advocates for the tenants and residents of the Cecil. They do everything they can, some things behind the scenes that residents don't even know about. They're doing amazing work on a shoestring budget. We need City Council's help. We need a commitment from the city to help clean up the Cecil so the city and its residents can thrive. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Greg Guest. I'm here for public comment.
Okay, so good afternoon. You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've been a resident at the Hotel Cecil for almost two years now, and first of all, I'd like to repeat and amplify what my other fellow residents have said. Like many others, the Hotel Cecil was my first physical mailing address in years and represented my first tentative step in returning to mainstream society. I have to say that when I was confronted with the often filthy, degrading, dangerous, and physically unaccommodating conditions at the Hotel Cecil, it was very discouraging. One wonders if the streets were not better in comparison. I certainly wonder if it wasn't better for the elderly and disabled residents that I see literally crawling up the stairs because the elevators have been broken for months. In my view, the first step of the street should be as welcoming and encouraging as possible. We should over-invest in people in this situation because it's the critical link in the chain to return people to mainstream society. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Paula Hastings. I am the assistant manager at the Cecil Hotel located at 640 South Main Street. I'm here on behalf of both the tenants and the building itself. Being a manager at the Cecil Hotel for just over a year and dealing with Kevin Delion's office and several law enforcements, we are doing our very best to pull the building together. People are focused on what the past of the Cecil is. The present is that we house over 300 people there now. Everyone there does not have a voucher. If that building is closed down, they are going to be homeless again. Karen Bass's main issue that she stood on when she was running for mayor was to approach the homeless population. Doing that, we have done that at the Cecil. As my coworker said, we do have issues of mental health, we have issues of damage to the building. We can use whatever assistance that the city is willing to give to us. I plead to you, not just for my job, because I can do what I do anywhere, but the homeless that we house are people that are dropped off and left and never looked back on again. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean Smith. I am doing a public comment.
So you have one minute.
I'm here today to support fixing the Cecil Hotel. I recently saw a handicapped woman having to drag themselves up the stairs because the elevator was down. This was disheartening to see. The Cecil is 14 stories, over 300 residents, and generally only has one elevator that is usually down. This is unacceptable for a building this size and creates fire and access issues for LAPD and paramedics. We need more oversight through our LAFD, high-rise building inspectors, and more assistance from the city. Over the past five years, I've served our downtown neighborhood council and have managed a building at Ninth and Broadway, and I understand firsthand how important it is to have functioning elevators. Thank you.
Thank you. Please exit to your right.
So this is on general public comment. Good afternoon. On this beautiful day, I want to talk about ecocide in the midst of climate change. Earlier this summer, recreation and parks oversaw the destruction of native habitat at Elysian Park. Not only native habitat, it is also shade for all the parkgoers, and it is a very, very popular place to be at this time. I know that you all have air conditioning in your cars, you have air conditioning in these halls, but people don't have that out there, and it's very easy to lose focus of what people out there live. And so that happens. Hundreds, if not thousands, of native species have been forcibly killed, displaced, or left to starve by the actions of the city. I'll keep it short. It's very bad, and there's a lot of people walking through that park that are very distrustful of what you're doing to their parks and their communities. So protect the native trees.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Hello, council. My name is Richard Shave. I'm here to speak on just general public comment. Just to further reiterate, the Hotel Cecil needs help. I hope that this outpouring of the residents this morning helps council District 14 identify some next steps. It's a very important place. It, I think, epitomizes all of the problems the city faces, both the city, nonprofits, and private equity, in helping to address homelessness and housing use crisis. So thanks for paying attention, CD 14, and I look forward to the next steps.
Good morning, everybody. God bless. I'm with the Cecil, and I'm sleeping on a, like a roll-out bed, which is not cool, but God is good. There's roaches, there's bedbugs, there's a lot going on. To give you guys a head up, I was number two in the nation for running back, coming out of the foster system from five to 21. Never talked to my mom at all through the system. When I got out and found my mom homeless at 22 years old in Santa Monica, I did whatever it took to get my mom off the streets, from St. Joseph and through all the services that she was going through at the time. I'm still positive. I'm still happy. I'm still motivated. By me being number two in the nation as a sophomore coming out of Santa Barbara at Rigetti High School, I ran behind Napoleon Kaufman and went to Lompoc, and went from Lompoc to Washington Huskies to the NFL, played with the Raiders. So I am a success story, but I'm wondering why am I still homeless at 49 years old? Because of what? Lack of what? Guidance, mentorship? And at the end of the day, God still gave me hope and said, you know what? We're gonna put you in a temp agency and let you be a cook, do Insta-work. I went to Insta-work at $20 an hour. Guess where they landed me at? The Los Angeles Rams 20-20 season.
Speaker, so your time has expired? Okay, great. Thank you, Speaker. We have to give each speaker the same amount of time legally. Right. Which district are you in?
I'm on Skid Row at the Cecil, sleeping on like a chair like this.
Okay. So unfortunately, we have to give everybody the same amount of time, so we can't allow you to speak at the podium. If you'd like to wait, we can see if there's a representative available to speak to you at the side. But we do need to move on to the other speakers for public comment.
Thank you. God bless.
This is a problem about some of the shelters downtown. You have AIs coming in at night when people are sleeping, the ladies are sleeping, scaring the death out of some of the ladies there. They sleep in little closets with beds in them, and you can't see over in the next part. Some of the people sleep very soundly, they don't hear it. They come in and rattle papers, and I don't know if they're real, they talk, and some of the ladies are scared half to death. They need help with that. I believe it's more than one shelter having that problem.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello? All right. It's now 12:06, my words. The L.A. sleazy council is the most corrupt local government in history.
Speaker, which items would you like to speak to?
This is public comment only.
Okay, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. It's the only or the most corrupt local government in the history of the United States, where petty, pink-faced corrupt Armenian dictator Paul Krakorian has indicated embezzling polygamous, criminal Kern Price, and sleazy Dawson to voting daily with the unelected Heather Hutt. The black community has zero representation from these incompetent, corrupt, sellout, self-serving, indicted, black Uncle Tom criminal members of these corrupt city councils. I demand all their resignations. I demand the resignation of corrupt Paul Krakorian, which you're soon to be exiting. Public black faces occupy 20% of the sleazy council, yet black people are nearly 50% of the homeless, 50% of the incarcerated, 50% of the unemployed. Their resignations are definitely demanded. Have a great afternoon, everybody.
All items and general comment.
So you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
What's going on? I got through, human. Well, go ahead. Yes. So let's talk about the lighting districts. Fuck all the lighting districts. And shame on the council members. Which ones? Shame on Amelda for not turning on her streetlights. And yet you wanna put more streetlights up and hide more taxes in the process.
I call it the Tracy Park Plan, 'cause she's more evil than Mike Bonin.
So, we have to begin with the items quickly. Everybody take notes. Today's drinking game word is fuck. Fuck item number one. Fuck item number two. Hold on. Go ahead. Fuck item number three. Item four, I'm neutralized. Item five, I support. Item six, fuck item number six. Item seven, fuck item number seven. Item eight, fuck item eight. Item nine, fuck item nine. Item 10, fuck item number 10 as well. Item 11, I'll support it if there's an amendment that Kern Price serve 10 years instead of three. Noted. Without objection. Item 12, fuck item number 12. Item 13, screw item number 13. Don't take a drink on that. Oh, sorry. Item number 14, I support. Item number 15, I like it. Item number 16, I like it. Item number 17, fuck item number 17. Take a drink, you drunk. Thank you. Item number 18, fuck item number 18. Item number 21, I will skip to it. Fuck it, too. Item number 24... to it. Fuck it too. Item number twenty-four, fuck item number twenty-four. Item number twenty-five, fuck that as well. Item number twenty-six, I like it. Item number twenty-seven, fuck that one too and the mother it came from. Item number twenty-seven, fuck it. Item number twenty-eight, fuck it. Item number twenty-nine, I'm neutral on it. Item number thirty, I'll defer.
To?
With, with no objection, I'll refer to Bob Plurp and Bluff. Item thirty-one, fuck item thirty-one. Item number thirty-two, I think is a Zionist item. I will defer it. Item number thirty-three, fuck that one.
You gotta go to general public comment now.
Oh, there he is. The alleged Zionist. So again, that was a beautiful song based on the famous song, "The sun will come out tomorrow," words and lyrics by Goat Puppet. The sun will come out tomorrow. Fuck all the Zionists tomorrow. Come what may, Kamala will be president tomorrow and Israel will lose all of its bonds. Come what may, Hezbollah and Gaza will fuck you tomorrow, vote for Kamala if you agree. That was beautiful. Let's give him a hand on that. Gee, Chris. Thank you. And again, I wanna wish everybody a happy return to city hall. Fuck each and every one of you and the mothers that hatched you out of your eggs and cocoons. And finally, fuck the Olympics as well.
Speaker, your time has expired. Speaker, your time has expired. And before we move on to the next caller, we, thank you. Um, before we move on to the next caller, um, just for everybody who is just now tuning in and this is new to them, uh, welcome. Uh, this is something that we deal with on a regular basis. Uh, we do have to allow everyone who, well, we do have to allow the speakers, um, to provide their public comment. So, um, I apologize for the comments that were made, but we have to allow them to speak during the public comment portion of this meeting. So, next caller?
Now, general public comment, I would like to address that tomorrow you will be voting on this motion to fund two million dollars um to a, and I know you've changed the language to be more vague, but it, it's still pretty clear to us. We all, we, you know, we can't be Darvo'd out of this. The facts are, it's not the anti-genocide protesters who are supporting innocent Palestinians that are being violent. It's the Zionist hateful people attacking them and that's on record. You can, you know, you can't take away the videos of all these people, you know, attacking. At that real estate event in Pico Robertson, the only person arrested was a pro-Israel Zionist supporter and it has nothing to do with religion. It's, it's, you know, there's more Christian Zionists in America than there are actual Jewish Americans in this country. So-
Items you wish to speak on?
Hi, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Which items would you like to speak to?
Um, all available items and general public comment, please.
Okay, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin with the items.
All right, so we got a lot of business improvement districts here, a lot of street lighting all at once. And you constantly hear people talk about how their neighborhoods are fucking dark as shit and they're scared to walk around at night and they beg and beg and beg. And then you see all of these street lighting districts get passed all at once and you have to wonder like, is it an indifference that the city council has to people suffering? And so they're just like, ah, we'll do it whenever we do it? Or is it just like a procedural thing? It's really hard to figure that part out for the BIDs. Interesting acronym. Um, I, I think it would be a lot more improving of the business of the whole fucking city if you just cut the rents in half for all the businesses, small businesses, nothing with a big franchise name attached to it, nothing like Starbucks. Fuck Starbucks, fuck Amazon. They do everything they can to fuck over the workers and the customers and the whole fucking country. But we have all these small businesses here that are struggling to survive and they're, a lot of their rents are grandfathered in and they're already paying, you know, pretty low compared to other places. And they still can barely afford to stay in business, so that needs to be changed. Nothing else really fucking matters but lowering the rent for everybody. Um, there's a lot of money just being shifted around here for police overtime. I wonder how much more overtime is gonna be needed when you have the police enforcing those uh temporary, uh, short-term rental agreements and all the party ordinances and all that bullshit. You're gonna have the police fucking getting overtime for doing paperwork. It's gonna be a joke and they're still gonna complain about staffing. Uh, instead of the police, you know, I don't understand why we can't take care of ourselves, you know? What's the second amendment for? If you don't use it, you lose it. So contact Los Angeles Valley Gun Club.
So, Speaker, I can't tell which item you're speaking to, so please stick to the agenda items.
Oh, because there's, there's all these, there's all these, there's all these police overtime. I'm saying we wouldn't need the police overtime if we were allowed to defend ourselves, which we're currently not allowed to. Um, there really is no self-defense laws. If someone tries to put a, uh, put a gun to your head, you have to call the police. But, excuse me, uh, general public comment? All right, so uh, contact Los Ang- All right, thank you. Stop interrupting me, please. Thank you very much. Uh, lavallygc@gmail.com or lavallygunclub@gmail.com. We're looking for members. We're trying to start the shit up soon. Uh, police don't protect us, we protect us. And it's your fucking right. It's, if you believe in God, it's your god given right to protect yourself. If you don't believe in God, be fucking logical. If you can't defend yourself, then who the fuck is gonna defend you? Obviously not the police. Even if you believe in the police, they're at least a few minutes away, which is generous as fuck. So be real. You should be allowed to defend yourself. We're all adults here. We can handle ourselves. We prove it every single day. So have faith in yourself, have faith in your community. And if you don't have faith in your community, then even more reason to be able to protect yourself and carry at least a twenty-two. Nothing that's gonna fucking blow a hole in a building, you know, but definitely something that's gonna stop someone from fucking up your day. So be real, be logical, be an adult. Don't let all the scare tactics shake you out of, you know, if, having your rights expressed in a way that is completely reasonable. There's nothing weird about having your second amendment rights-
Caller, your time has expired.
Express.
Caller, user five, this is your last opportunity to speak. Please press star six to mute. All right, next caller?
Okay, we've already heard from Mr. Spindler and a nice imitation of Mr. Preven's dogs. Next caller?
Caller ending in nine eight zero nine, please speak to item number two.
Yes, danielgus.substack.com and my point is that Richard Serrano and Susan Roche are correct because you deprived me of the opportunity also.
Good afternoon. Respectfully, this is not on item number two. The, Mr. Gus, the only item that is open for public comment right now is item number two. So would you like to speak to item number two?
Okay, I'm gonna conscientiously take the time to address item number two because that way I can be heard on item number two since I was deprived of speaking on the items I had been hold on, hold for for all the hours. So let me address item number two so I can spend some of your time the way you have spent some of mine in Serrano's and Roche's. Um, I, gee, let me see. I'll pull up the agenda and we'll pause, 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 tap, tap, tap because I will PRA the records because you have a pattern and practice of doing this. Bob, please check your email. Check your email, Mr. Groot. Check your email, Mr. Bloomingfield. This has happened again. Please correct the record before I have to file a claim in a lawsuit.
Mr. Gus, this is not on item number two. This is your final warning. Please stick to item number two. Go ahead.
Call in user six, please speak to item number two. Call in user six, please speak to item number two.
All right. Next caller, and to the extent of that is Mr. Spindler. Calling in multiple times does disrupt this meeting. So please do not disrupt this meeting. You are still subject to the council rules, which includes warnings and removal and potential probation. Next caller?
Also, also callers are limited to the human variety. We do not allow dogs or other pets to call in. It's a different number.
Yes, my name is Jason. I'm host and viewer and-
Caller, you've already, sorry. This is already, this caller's had, already had the opportunity to speak and did not want to speak about item number two.
Also, speaking, not barking.